If everyone would please stand and join me in the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get underway, for those of you who watch us regularly either on TV or here, you'll notice that there's been a shift in the seating. And that's because in the last month, we lost Russ Thomas, who was a member of the board for the last 14 and a half years. And I think made just about every one of the meetings during those years. And was an active member in the community and a great husband and father to his family. And so I just would like to observe a moment of silence in Russ's memory and think of all the contributions that he made to making the one town of Arundic quite, as he liked to say, great. I also like to point out that among the many contributions that Russ made to our board several years ago, four or five years ago, Russ suggested that the town provide signs for the zoning board members to put on their cars so that when we go around town and park in front of people's houses and start walking around and looking around, the police don't get called because people know why we're there. And it took a long time. But at the last meeting that Russ was at, the April meeting, the signs were waiting for us up here at our seats. And unfortunately, although Russ was thrilled to get the signs, unfortunately, his health didn't allow him to use them to scope things out before the May meeting. And so if you see us around town now and you see the signs that say, "Arundic quite zoning board member", think of Russ because that was his idea. He pushed for that. And we're going to miss him. Alright, so I'd like to, well, first off, I'll start by welcoming Tim Scott, who is, has been the alternate member of our board for the last year and a half or so, I think, two years?
Oh, yeah, about a year, maybe.
Is that it? Alright. And with Russ's passing, Tim now becomes a permanent member of the board, I believe.
Once the town board adopts, makes that permanent by resolution.
Okay.
And that is forthcoming. We did confirm with Tim that he was interested in being considered by the town board and so that'll be advanced at the June meeting.
I didn't know exactly how that worked, but okay. So, I'll welcome everyone to the June meeting of the Arundic quite zoning board of appeals. Undertake a little housekeeping before we get going. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to this exit. Do not use either of the elevator, use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record and minutes, not a transcript. So we ask to help her in keeping everything straight. If when you come to the podium, you would please identify yourself each time and speak clearly into the microphone. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table near the door. And the procedure that we follow is this. Once the case is called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, identify themselves, state their address, pause a moment, raise their right hand, be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, the members of the board have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or engage in discussion, as the case may be. When that process has been completed and we don't have any more questions or anything else to discuss, then we'll open the hearing to public input. Anyone wishing to address the board has the right to do so. All you need to do is come to the podium, identify yourselves along with your address, and direct your questions and comments to the board, not to the applicant. There are three categories that have been identified thus far. We're open to more if you can think of them. The first category of people that we ask to come forward are those who wish to speak in favor of the application. After we've heard from anyone and everyone who wants to speak in favor of the application, we then ask for those to come forward who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And after we've heard anyone and everyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application, the third category that's been identified are those who are not in favor or opposed to the application but want to talk to us about something in relation to the application, whether it's a question about a foreigner lot or how high a fence and where a fence could be, or how many chickens you can have, or whatever that may be. That's the time for input about that. That has nothing to do with pro or con, but is related to the application. Once that process has all been completed and we've heard from anyone and everyone who wishes to participate in the public input portion of the hearing, the applicant will have a chance to come back to the podium, address any concerns that were raised during the public hearing, answer any further questions that there may be from the board. And then when that is completed, we'll close the case with respect to that application and move on to the next case on the agenda. Once we've heard all the cases, the board will take a short recess. And after we return, we will deliberate each case in the order of the applicants that are still present as they appear on the agenda. So if the first applicant has left, we would take the second case first, assuming the second case applicant is still present. And we'll go through and take all the cases for the applicants who are still present. And then when we've completed those, we'll go back to the top of the agenda and in order that they appear, take the cases where the applicant has left. During this portion of the meeting, there is no further input that is allowed unless the board requests it. So you're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberation. But if you wish to leave and you're interested in knowing what we decided, you can either catch us, and I believe we're now on 1301, or you can call the planning and zoning department tomorrow morning or any morning after 9:00 a.m. and they'll be glad to tell you what we decide. So I think that concludes all of our preliminary matters and we'll call our first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First case on the agenda is case number ZB 1906-1. Upon the matter of request by Frank Lanza for area variances to install a shed in the front yard with less than required distance from dwelling and front and side setbacks on premises 67 Birchwood Drive in an R3 residential district.
Hello, I'm Frank Lanza. My address is 67 Birchwood. At first, I...
May I interrupt you? If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
When I first applied for this, I was gonna put it in the driveway. And then when I talked to the lady on the phone, she told me my better bet would be behind the tree. I have pictures of where and I have signatures from the four houses around my house. I know they signed the copy that you guys have, I think it was in the driveway. And then this one is behind the tree. And then the front of the shed would be 39 feet from the edge of the road and 30 feet from the front of my house in the lawn. And I don't know if you guys want to see these.
I'd tell you it'd probably face the driveway.
The door would face the driveway. Like I said...
Yeah, if you hand those to Mr. Scott, he'll pass them around. Sir, does it matter to you whether it's by the tree or in front of the, on the driveway?
I'd rather have, like, when she said it, I didn't think they would let me in the front yard. I didn't think I had a chance. But when she said it, I was like, I would rather have it there because it's not blocking my driveway or the window, you know?
You were gonna ask if it was in front of that window?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever you guys allow me to do, I'm cool with, you know? I just have, if you guys look, I have no backyard.
We can see that.
My only concern is it being too close to the road versus, you know, putting it back closer to the house. Maybe not all the way to the house, but halfway between the tree and the house.
Okay.
I mean, that's just my opinion, but I'll see what everybody else thinks.
When I had it laid out for them to come, it was 40 feet from the road, like, behind the tree. But whatever I'm allowed to, I'm cool with. Just need something.
So at the end of the driveway, it would block that window that you have in the room that faces the driveway. And at the location behind the trees, it would also kind of hide it. Or at least disguise it a little from the road. It wouldn't be as noticeable. Those tree trunks are pretty big. They've been there a while.
Yes. And then I had all the, all my neighbors sign it because I didn't have it in when I applied.
Have your neighbors expressed preferences to which location they would prefer?
They said they didn't. It was cool. They were cool either way. One of them told me to go for a pool, joking.
I mean, the tree location is in line with the house next door. So it's not like it's gonna be protruding in front of other residences. You'll put the entrance to the shed off the driveway?
Yeah, like if I was on the driveway at the edge, it opened towards me. It's a side door. There's a picture of it.
Alright, any other questions or comments from the board?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I will...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. If it goes in the tree location, does that eliminate the side setbacks?
So if it goes in the tree location, the side setback looks like it should be fine. It would be, it's five feet as a minimum or 10% of width of the lot?
So we'll only have the area variance and to allow it in the front yard and an area variance for less than the front setback?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, one question. Do we have to have the exact measurements or can we just kinda? Because I'm not sure if these measurements are actually accurate on the application. So maybe if you can get us the distance.
I had it right here, 39 feet.
Okay, so 39 feet from the road?
From the right, right quarter of the shed.
Okay.
And then...
And then 30 feet from the house?
Yeah, from the back of it, from the, that's that side, you know what I mean? Like if I was at the door, the 40 feet would be from this corner, you know? And then the 30 would be...
Mr. Chairman, is that sufficient enough to...
I think so, but when you're measuring behind the trees, are you measuring from the edge of the pavement?
Yes, from the drive, from the street, from the road.
Alright, because the right of way is actually wider than where the pavement is. So you actually, there's a, the town right of way for the street includes part of the lawn, so...
From right...
I think what might be better is if we indicate that you can... How much distance were you planning on having between the shed and the south end of the raised bed where the trees are?
Did it add to the driveway end?
No, from the, he's got a raised bed around those two big trees. There's a couple of landscaping timbers that are stacked.
About 15 feet.
Excuse me, sir. If you're gonna speak and provide testimony, I need you to either come to the podium and identify yourself if that's okay?
Frank Lanza, Frank Lanza's father.
Thank you.
You swear that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Alright, so you were planning on it being about 15 feet south of the raised...
15 feet back from the bump of the, behind the tree.
Okay.
And then like four feet off the edge of the driveway, like toward the center of the yard. So it's not like on the driveway.
And having it 15 feet from that bump still leaves 40 feet from the house?
Uh huh.
Okay.
It's 39 feet from the edge of the road and then 29 feet and nine inches from the front door of his house to the backside of the shed.
Alright.
With the shed being eight, if you were in the driveway and you're looking toward the neighbor's house, it's like eight by 10.
Right, so it's a 10 feet by eight feet shed with the 10 feet length being parallel to the driveway?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we can probably describe it sufficiently with that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about sheds, driveways, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll call our next case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is case number ZB 1906-2. This is upon the matter of request by Nisi Packard for a special use permit to harbor four Hens with coop pursuant to section 23570 of Town Code on premises 672 Titus Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Hello, my name is Jane Cress. My address is 345 Sterns Road, Churchville, New York. Should we do this?
Yes. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And my understanding is that you're here with the applicant's permission to present her case because she had something that came up that prevents her from being here?
Correct, she had an emergency.
Yes.
Couldn't have been here. I also need to tell you that I'm the zoning board chair for the town of Riga.
Oh, very nice.
Likes to see what other people do.
Yes, welcome.
So, Nisi would like to put in a chicken coop with four hens. She is aware of the regulations of the Town Code. She intends to make sure that all the feed is kept locked up so that there would not be any brooming allowed. And she wants to make sure that the fencing goes down into the ground so that nothing can get at her new chickens. She does, she does, her lot has a fence around the back so you can't even see into her backyard to see chickens or coop. So she would like, and she wanted to make sure that you did know that she knows that the feed needs to be kept inside, so...
When I read through her application, my first thought was that she'd obviously gone back and looked at a lot of our hearings on what we've done with chickens in the past because she nailed every single point that we have brought up in the past as we make our way through chickens.
Okay.
And goats and anything else.
She does know that she's only supposed to have four and no roosters are allowed?
I saw that in there. That was part of it, yep. And she's got the two feet down. She had everything covered.
Right.
Alright. Any questions, comments from the board?
Yes, I noticed that she already has a small coop. Is that for the chickens or whatever?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I guess this came up last time. The minimum size for the cage, so if it's, I don't know if we have an agreement, maybe, maybe our staff can correct us, but it's two to three square feet per chicken? Now I think that cage was, cage was maybe four by two, maybe? Looking at it from the backyard, it's pretty small. So that's my only concern is that the chickens have enough room to, that meets the minimum veterinary requirements. And that's the physical cage that's located in the backyard now?
Correct.
The cage is already there?
I believe so.
Okay.
Or partially there. It looks like it's in process of being built because there's not wiring at the bottom etc.
I was there the other day. The cage is completely built. Coop is built. The only thing she hasn't done is buried the wire, the chicken wire fencing around the base of it. But the rest of it is, I would say, 100% done.
Okay.
The actual overall size of the pen and the coop together is probably a little larger. But the actual box that the chickens stay in at night is half the size. So there is a nice run and it's actually a nice coop. But Mr. Evans does bring up a good question. Is it the right size for four? I would think it might be, but I'm not 100% sure.
And owe you to whatever you decide, Mr. Chairman. There's two different cages in here. I just, which one does she have?
I don't know because this is kind of my, I'm just filler. You know, I don't know for sure what she has, how big the cage is.
Does she have this one, Mike, or she's got...
On the back of that.
It's on the back there. She's got what looks to be the exact...
The one that says it's a 199.99?
Yes.
Under $200.
Yes. She's got, no, this is the one.
Okay.
She's got this one already.
Yeah.
Checks it looks bigger.
On the, on the back of it... Well, it does say, let's see...
This one doesn't say. The other one did.
This one says up to eight. Yeah, the back page of the coop that she has, assuming that's the correct back page, says it's good for up to eight chickens. Asphalt roof, that's the one.
Just to clarify, if you look at the bottom of that second page, it does reference on the very bottom the coop number. So it does align with the page before it. So if there's any questions about whether it was a copying, if the pack information goes with the front information, the numbers do align.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that being said, then, I would think this coop is...
Excuse me, might I, thank you.
It's right there.
Oh, it was hiding. We couldn't see it. We thought maybe you took it down. Thank you.
It's like when I was back at school.
Yeah, you gotta speak into that microphone.
Yeah, it does, based on the information that's with this coop, it looks like it would be sufficient for the four hens.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up.
Hi, my name is Mary Nikosia.
Nope.
No, I don't have to, okay.
Only the applicants can swear.
Alright, thank you. I live at 754 Titus Avenue. I've been a resident and owned my property there for 34 years. All the years I've lived in my home, I have continuously maintained and continue to enhance and maintain my property. I'm here tonight because of the very troubling situation at the property next door to me at 762 Titus Avenue. The property is owned by Nisi Packard, who has lived there approximately three to four years. The prior owner, now deceased, was my neighbor Paula Maywalt, who lived there for 34 years. I mention Paula because she always maintained the property in a meticulous manner and she had a beautiful flower garden. The side yard and backyard of 762 Titus have not been maintained well by the current owner. Maintenance of the property is inconsistent. Debris in the yards are not picked up. I tell you this to give you context about how the property has been maintained and how it relates to the problems at hand. There are also pictures I am providing to further illustrate the problems. These are problems have become extremely troubling in surrounding neighborhoods and myself. About three weeks ago, I learned that the next door neighbor at 762 Titus, without a permit, has been keeping four chickens in a chicken coop in her backyard. On last Sunday, May 26, I went next door and spoke with Nisi in her backyard and she showed me the chickens and the chicken coop. She said she was previously keeping them inside her enclosed porch. The next day, on May 27, I noticed the gate from the side yard to the backyard where the chickens are was open and the gate remained open for three days. It is also 20 feet from my bedroom window. After learning about the chickens in the next yard next to mine, I did some research and called the Monroe County Health Department about the situation. I was told that it is a problem in the town of Arundic quite and that there is a problem of rats. They advised me to call Arundic quite Town Hall, contact the town zoning board, and request to appear at the next zoning board of appeals meeting, voicing my concerns. That is why I'm here tonight. Here are the issues that I am concerned about. 20 feet from my bedroom window, possible rats, properties on Titus Avenue and Hedgegarth are very close to each other and should not be keeping chickens in their yards with houses so close. Chickens draw predatory animals, including rats. The side yard and backyard at 762 has not been, has not been and not well maintained. The backyard is a jungle with weeds, weed trees, tall grass, and a rip mesh fence in the middle of the yard. I understand there has been rats already on Hedgegarth ride over the past year, which continues today due to Hedgegarth neighbor keeping chickens. I do not want my property to become devalued as a result of these problems. I do not want to incur costs associated with an exterminator and I don't want to have extermination chemicals in my yard and environment. There's also a health hazard. I have toddler grandchildren who enjoy my backyard and don't want them exposed to chemicals either. The past week, I was contacted by a neighbor, Carol Newfuglecy of 99 Hedgegarth, who has been experiencing problems as a result of a Hedgegarth neighbor keeping chickens in their yard. As a direct result of the chickens being kept by the neighbor, Ms. Newfuglecy has problems with rats as other neighbors on Hedgegarth. She had to hire an exterminator, incurred the expenses related to exterminations, and continues to have the problem to this date. She asked me to attend this meeting tonight and I told her that I would. In summary, this is a residential and commercial area and no one wants rat problem or predatory animals that chickens attract. I ask that you do not grant a permit for 762 Titus to keep chickens on the property and further that you do not grant such permits for keeping chickens in residential and commercial area, both on Titus Avenue and Hedgegarth Drive and other town residential and commercial areas. I further ask the town assure and force in compliance with maintenance of the property, including front and side yards and the backyard of 762 Titus. And I have photographs to support it.
If you'd hand them to Mr. Scott, we'll pass them around.
Can I ask you, are you on the, if you're facing the house, are you on the left side of her or the right side?
I'm on the, facing, I'm on the left.
Facing the house, she's on the left.
So you're right next to the driveway?
Yeah. The bedrooms are right there and there's pictures of the coop where the fence is and it's about 20 feet from my house.
I talked with Nisi and she had mentioned, she spoke with you?
Yeah.
And she told me that she didn't think you minded?
Yeah, well, until I started investigating and researching.
Okay. Alright, that's alright.
And you mentioned...
And I also have a neighbor that, next to me on the other side, is against it too.
You mentioned Ms. Newfuglyce from Hedgegarth. Where does she live in relation to your house?
It's the street behind me.
Oh, I know where Hedgegarth is.
Okay.
But I'm saying in relation to your house. Does she live between Garden and Cooper on Hedgegarth?
She lives between Garden, the other side, not towards Cooper.
So east of there?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know how far down she lives?
Just a couple houses down from Gardam.
Okay.
On the right.
Carrie, do you know, has the, the town received any information from the neighbors on Hedgegarth about the chickens there?
I can, I can check, I don't know that we, if we have, um, I know that in the past, um, there hasn't been a, when we've looked at where reports of tho- those kinds of concerns, they weren't directly aligned with, um, locations of where special use permits have been issued, but I haven't looked at that recently, so I can certainly look at that.
All right, if you could check into that for us, we'd appreciate that. Also, I wanna point out, which I usually do, um, area variances and use variances are, as the name implies, exceptions to the requirements of the code. So, uh, for example, the case that we just did, the code prohibits having a shed in the front yard, and prohibits it from being closer than a certain distance, and we can, a variance grants an exception to allow something to be closer or to be in a place that it otherwise would not be allowed. This is a special use permit, and we've had several examples of special use permits that have come up in, in the past, and a special use permit, it differs from a variance. Because a special use permit, the town board in the town code has said that these uses are permitted uses in the town. You can have chickens in your yard, you can have goats in your yard, you can have other animals in your yard, but you need a special use permit, so that the board can impose any conditions that we have found to be, uh, helpful in minimizing the effect of what's allowed on the neighborhoods. And we have traditionally, and we've sort of worked our way through this the last, uh, I think, six or seven years, and, um, we've limited the number of hens, we've limited it to a five-year period. Uh, we've required that veterinary certificates be submitted annually. We've, uh, required that the coop and the run be at least four feet, uh, from property lines. We've required that there be a two-foot depth fencing dug into the ground to prevent or discourage burrowing, and we've, another condition is that town staff is to conduct inspections on an annual basis without prior notice, so that we are aware of how things are actually being kept instead of how they might be dressed up for someone coming from the town. And we've required that the feed be stored in an enclosed area, not outside, uh, and that the coop be maintained in a clean, uh, fashion, all right, we've had, um, the, the complaints that we've had, it was from prior in, in, uh, applications, when we've gotten reports back from the town, they've addressed the concerns that were raised. One of them was noise from, from chickens, and several of us spent, uh, considerable time, myself a half hour standing at a fence at six in the morning, um, to see if there was any noise, uh, from chickens. And the only thing that I heard was the dogs that were barking in the neighborhood, you couldn't hear the chickens. Um, and, and I say that only because it's not that your concerns, we're not unmindful of your concerns, but you need to understand chickens are allowed in the town, so.
I know, my, my concern is she doesn't keep the property, right now she's cleaning, she's been cleaning up the yard, cause she knows people are looking, but.
Well, part of, part of the special use permit, as I mentioned, the conditions are, we require that the coop and the feed, and that it all be maintained and kept clean, and that the food be stored away. Uh, we can't put a condition about maintaining a garden or a flower bed or anything like that.
When there's weeds.
And will probably require that, uh, it, the gate be closed at all times, if the chickens are there, s- to keep things out from there, it should be closed, that's not something that's been brought to our attention before, so as I said, we're, this is a work in progress, we're working these conditions out as we go along, all right?
Okay, why does she have the chickens already in there without the permit?
Well, you know, we frequently deal with the fact that, uh, people, uh, do things that they're not supposed to do, and they think that if they ask for forgiveness, that it's better than asking for permission. Uh, that has sometimes proven to be the case, other times it has not. We have had people who have come in and asked for permission to keep things that have been done, um, without, uh, the proper variances, and in some instances, we have denied the variances, and they've been required to remove or take down whatever it was that was, uh, put up. Uh, we had an instance where someone enclosed, uh, uh, an overhang on an outbuilding, and we did not approve that, and they had to take that down. We've had instances where people have installed fences that we have not approved, and they've had to remove those. The same thing holds true for chickens, we've had people who have had chickens in their yard that were way too small, uh, for the chickens, and, and we denied them, and the town, for lack of a better word, evicted the chickens, and if we deny the application here, then that would be the same, same thing, if we grant it, we'll impose conditions that we've can impose that are consistent with the concerns of the neighbors, and the fact that the town has made a policy decision that chickens are, and other animals are allowed. Uh, and I know there are other places in town where there are chickens, and there are no special use permits, because I'm pretty familiar with the locations, because I've been on the board for, I think this is the fourteenth year, and I know where we've approved them and where we haven't. And I know that there's chickens in places where I've seen them. Um, and I know that they don't have a special use permit, and I've called it to their attention, and they have yet to apply for a special use permit, and so that's been reported to the town. And anybody who's out there who's watching or who's listening, uh, if you have chickens, you have to come and get a special use permit. And the longer you wait, the less hospitable we may be to allowing that to continue. I, I don't know how lo- how long have these chickens been there?
Uh, outside, a, a couple weeks.
We, we have, sometimes we have people who've had them for years, and then, uh, our, it comes to their attention that they, um, needed a permit, so they asked for it. Um, we try and make it clear, I think, do we have signs, I know in some towns do, do we have signs that when you come into town that say zoning ordinance in effect? All right, we may not, uh, but, you know, people, when they buy a house, they should understand that there are government regulations, and that includes zoning, it includes other things, uh, and so ignorance is not always an excuse. Uh, sometimes it may be an explanation, but it's never an excuse. And we try and, and not, um, sanction, uh, things, people going ahead and doing it, and then asking for permission. So, you know, I, I'm.
Yeah, uh, my point about the backyard, it high weeds, weed trees growing, that harbors animals.
It does, and regardless of whether they have chickens or not.
That's right, so it's just another little hazard of animals. It's, it, I'm not happy with it, and I had already called, you know, complained about that. If you wanna have this, you gotta keep your property right.
I, I, based on what I saw, I have a tendency to agree with you, um, a- and it also, uh, she was in the middle of putting the netting down, and I, I mentioned to her, you need to stop, because you haven't ha- got this approved yet, and she was, you know, she had the thing built, uh, it must have been a kit or something that somebody put it up and built it for. Uh, it, it's, it's, to me, it's in a weird location, um, there's not a lot of room around it between the fence and the property, uh, or the, the, the deck, uh, but I do understand how the whole backyard looks, and, um, that is though, is a concern of mine also. And typically, some of the ones that we have approved, you know, people do, um, everybody takes different care of their property, and if, if the overall property is kept nicely, um, you realize that they're gonna keep, um, their animals nice. Um, and you kinda worry about, um, the, the, the overall, if, if that's not kept well, how are they gonna do with the chickens?
Exactly.
I, I, I feel your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application, step right up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carol Newfuglyse, and I live at ninety-nine Hedgegarth Drive. I'm also a lifelong resident of Arundicoid, I've grown up here, raised two children, and now grandchildren also in the town. In all these years, I've never had the conversation about rats like I've had in the past couple years. Um, I'm aware of a number of households that have had to deal with true rat infestation over the past few years, that have gotten into their home and that, and have had a terrible time getting rid of them. I'm not here to judge anyone's interest in chickens. Myself, I love the TV character Olivia Walton, and I wanted the type of lifestyle for many years. I believe in the farm-to-table food sourcing movement and to eat locally grown foods. However, I also believe the chickens are not appropriate for the lot sizes of our homes and close proximity to our neighbors. The real problem I have is rats. Now, uh, you mentioned looking into, um, a Hedgegarth neighbor. Um, actually, there was a property at seven eighty Titus, um, which is like behind me and over one house, that, um, had unpermitted chickens, and, um, I don't know if they st- I know as of this winter, when someone from the department came and was able to see them for themselves, um, they were gonna be issued a letter about getting a permit, I don't know where things stand with that, or if, um, they still actually have the chickens. You mentioned noise.
Said that was seven eighty Titus?
Seven eighty.
Is that like on the corner of Hedgegarth or right near there?
No, it's right, it's like three houses in, I think, so it's behind me and over one going west. So I'm in, I'm between Gardam and Cooper.
Yeah.
And I would be on the south side of the street.
Yeah.
And they are on.
They're to the west.
Yep.
So they're closer to Cooper.
Correct. Correct, yep.
So they'd be like a neighbor of Ms. Nikosia?
No, they're, they're like, they're actually right behind the house next door to me, the, the house going west next door to me, they're right behind there. Um, they have the barking dogs, that's another night. Um, but as far as the noise from chickens, um, I agree, they're quiet for the most part, um, other than, you know, certain times of the day, you can hear them. Um, I actually was outdoors in the middle of the day this winter, and they were clucking up a storm. It was very loud, so I mean, if, if someone's that close, like Mary, and if that happens, you know, when someone comes out to say to feed them every morning, I, I think that would be an issue, the noise is loud.
You're talking about the ones at seven eighty?
Yes, cause they're right behind me, kitty corner.
Okay.
But it was very loud, I actually took a recording of it, it came here for another reason, but went upstairs with it, and they said they couldn't accept it because, you know, it was on my phone, they have to obtain the evidence, so. But, um, I, I was quite surprised at actually how loud they were for that time being. Something must have been in the backyard, you know, rustling them up, but, um. So the big problem I have is rats, though, um, I pay about four hundred dollars a year, and I'm on very restricted income for pest extermination because of this. Um, I've had to dispose of a dead rat, and I've cleaned up rat feces. Uh, my neighbors have found dead rats on their property, both next to me and across the street. My bait boxes, of which there are two, are empty every time the pest control service comes to refill them, so, um, rodents are completely eating the contents of it. Um, just to help prove my point, one female rat, here's your biology lesson, has, uh, a twenty-one day or a three-week gestation period. She may have fourteen babies at that time, and can typically reproduce forty to seventy rats in a year. Consider also that female offspring from the mother, uh, will also start reproducing, and they are sexually mature at three months, and then they'll continue, that's a lot of rats. Um, where do the rats live, it's been mentioned, um, you know, their harborage can be in brush and stuff that's not cleared up. They will burrow or invade a space close to their food source. Um, and what are the top food sources? Um, chickens, their feed, and the poop. Um, it, you know, you say that the chicken seed or feed will be kept in a closed container, but how do they feed the chickens? Is it dispersed on the ground, is there a trough? There, there's still somewhat of an open area, um, I know when I've talked to the health department, he described people that, you know, he had a dog outside, bowl of food, dog was sleeping, taking a nap right next to it, and the rats were coming out, cause they had harbored under the doghouse, and they were coming up and eating the food out of the dog dish, so they like to live close to where they eat. Um, by nature, chickens are not clean. Um, dog waste is the next food that rats like to eat, so, and we've had this situation in our neighborhood too, where people, you know, never picked up their dog waste, and that has contributed to the problem. Um, bird feeders too, I've had to give up using bird feeders because of rodent damage and tunneling under my driveway. Um, I try to, you know, be a good neighbor, I try to inform other neighbors, you know, that, about, you know, so they don't attract them to their property. Uh, and we've had neighbors that have all varying levels of, you know, piles of brush, not cleaning up after pets, all that. Um, my main concern is rodents also harbor nasty diseases that are spreadable to humans. If they shelter in your garage, they'll pee and poop on all your stuff. If you have, um, if you have to dry sweep your floor, it's not a good idea, because the pathogens are easily aerosolized, and you can breathe them in. This is a valid concern for someone like myself, or anyone that's immune compromised by disease or medications, the young, very young people, old, and the pregnant, whose immune systems are weakened, and, uh, even a healthy person, i- if they get a good exposure to some of these things, could become very ill. And if they invade your home, I hope you have a lot of money to deal with it. Um, sometimes the walls have to come down, and it can be thousands of dollars to get them out of your house. And I've known people that it's taken, um, over a year, uh, of trying to get them, get the rats away and get them to stay away, and that's often contributed to by a neighbor who's not keeping up their yard, or chickens, or whatever. To me, the town of Arundicoid needs to amend section twenty-two, two thirty-five dash seventy of the town code to add a yet, to be determined appropriate amount of land for permitting residents to have chickens, or any other farm animals that are listed, like you mentioned goats and all that. Um, I believe the code, I mean, I understand what you've presented tonight, how you've narrowed it down and have developed restrictions and all that, but I still think it's, it's too loose. When you consider how close our houses are, and how small our lots are, it's, it's just too close. Um, we're a residential community, we're no longer a farming community as we once were. Please respect and listen to those of us who have legitimate concerns, um, especially being neighbors to those that are being allowed to have farm animals on their property. This really needs fresh eyes, in my opinion, and a thoughtful change to your permitting process, and I thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up.
Good evening, everyone, I also am a neighbor on the other side of the, um.
I'm sorry, excuse me, ma'am, could you ex- uh, state your name and address?
I'm sorry, this is my first time here, so. My name is Paletta Brown, and I reside at seven six six Titus Avenue, and, um, I've been there now, it's been about.
So are, I'm sorry, are you to the, as you're facing the house, you're to the east, so you're next door?
Directly east side neighbor.
Right hand side.
Yes.
Closer to Gardam.
Yes, that's correct, yes, so I've been there about twelve years now, and, um, I really, I, I don't know any of the, um, And um, I really, I, I don't know any of the um laws or the statutes or any of those things. My main concern is what my neighbor just spoke about concerning the rodents, and that terrifies me. So if there's something that could be done to um perhaps ensure, if, if we could do that, that um our property isn't overrun by any rodents, that's, that's my main concern. The, the noise, I, I'm a, we're all, my whole entire family are hard sleepers, and we don't really, too much, I, I, we don't mind the noise, that's just us. But the, the rodent piece of it is um, is a tremendous concern for us. So I don't know what guidelines um are already established or could be established to ensure maybe feed is kept in a certain place. You know, I know we do the best that we can also with our, our dog food. You know, we keep it in enclosed containers to make sure that, you know, our dog food is, is not being smelled or attracting any rodents. So if that's um doable, please, 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 let's do it, let's do it. Because it is, it, our houses, our homes are in close proximity, as everyone has said, and I second that motion and, or third that motion. And um, we, I too um have a family, and our, our income is limited, and to have to do something to um take care of a rodent infestation would devastate us. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else here that w- wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who'd like to talk to us about chickens, rats, coops, anything like that that is related in some way to this application that's neither in favor or opposed?
Mr. Hinman, can I?
I was gonna ask, seeing that none, I'll ask the applicant's representative to come back. I know you're on the spot because you're not the applicant, and you weren't able to anticipate some of the things that may have been brought up.
I know that Nisi did um consider the possibility of having anything get into the feed, and that she was definitely gonna put it in a, I mean, she doesn't want rats on her property either, so that she would want, um, she would definitely put it in a metal container. Also, um, if, I'm sure I can speak for her when I say that if cleaning up the backyard is an issue, um, I think, I'm sure she would do that in order to have her permit for the chickens approved. I, I know also personally that Nisi has been dealing with um cleaning out her parents' house cuz her father just died very recently, so she might not have gotten to her spring cleanup. It's also been raining feet, so I think that she might not have gotten to that. But I'm sure that she would agree that if that was a problem or a big concern, she would certainly work, you know, she would make sure that that happened before she got her permit.
The only thought that comes to mind with respect to that is that unfortunately she can't be here tonight. And it, it seems to me that there are some, for example, the location of the coop in the yard uh was, was brought up, and that might be something that the board would like to have an opportunity to question her about and about other locations and, and that kind of thing. And you're not equipped to make those decisions for her.
But I would ask, um, if you would, if you would like her to speak for herself, if you could table the permit application until the next meeting, she could certainly speak for herself by then.
Right, that, that would be our July meeting, so as her designated representative, you would consent to having that tabled so she can be here to address those concerns in July?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Well, the only comment I have is, it, the, the, obviously, the, to pardon the pun, the chicken, which came first, the chicken or the coop? Or the egg, yeah. She's already got the chickens in the backyard. It, it, it's offensive to, obviously, the neighbors. I, and the coop, I mean, I feel bad that she bought this coop. But if it's um, if she can bring those chickens somewhere else for the next month, I think that's what should be done because I was there the other day, and she's a very nice lady, and she actually wanted to take the chickens out and have me pet them, and as she pulled them out, the, the stuff underneath, whether it's the wood chippings or the, or their feces that they, you know, dropped on the ground. And I thought, well, that's not right, you know, and I didn't say anything to her. And then she showed me where her, where the feed was in, in a back room that's kinda open, and it's just a bag of food laying up against the wall that, uh, with a, with a screen, not even a door, just a screen, so any rodent, like the neighbors say, is gonna smell that and, and find their way into that back room. So, that being said, I think they should be moved, and things should stop until we have the final conversation on Jul- in July.
Okay, I'll let her know that.
You know, that she needs to, you know, harbor them somewhere else, somebody's farm out in the country. Uh, and I know it's gonna break her heart, but um, she, she, uh, she did it without checking first and um, and then if she...
It does sound like that there's other people with chickens in the town of Veranda Coit that don't have permits either.
Well, and it might be...
But she does, I mean, she certainly knows the rules, cuz as you said in her application, she tried to make sure that she had followed the rules as far as the coop went and where, where it was placed and the fence and everything. So she just certainly knows that she, the rules apply.
And there have been people that have come to the board, and they, we have approved them, you know, the location, the, the, you know, and we've gone out, we've seen the, 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 the character of the neighborhood, we've seen how nice the people take care of the facility and, and so on and so forth. So, that being said, we have approved them, there's no doubt. But there are some that we have turned down, and, and uh, and then, you know, again, the fact that she's um... And a- as far as what you said, there are people that are getting away with it. There might be a few, but I would hope, and I, and I'm pretty sure that we're on it, the town's on it.
What I can share from town staff is that when it comes to the town's attention that there are chickens being harbored or hens, any animal that requires a special use permit, our first order of business is to check special use permits granted by the, this board. If one has not been granted, then they, um, we um send a code enforcement inspector out to take a look and see if they can see evidence of uh chickens or other animals being harbored. Even when that's the case, um, notice a violation for failure to comply with the harboring law is sent. And then those folks are either required to bring the property into compliance by obtaining, applying for and obtaining a ZBA approval, or they can elect to remove the chicken. So we do follow up when we receive code complaints regarding uh chickens or other animals being harbored without the proper approval.
I, I also would ask the board not to hold other people's actions in the neighborhood against Nisi cuz she isn't the one that's had problems with chickens before. So, and I know, I agree with a lot of things that you're saying, that, you know, what, make sure that it's appropriate and that everything's put away and that there's no problem with the chickens, and she did do it before she got her permit. But I don't think she should be held accountable for some other things that are happening in the neighborhood that the neighbors are having issues with, because she hasn't done that yet.
No, but the, the, the concerns of the neighbors of, it, it sounds like something's already started, and they don't want to throw fuel on the fire.
Correct, but that's, that should be addressed with that property owner. N- Nisi didn't do it, somebody else did it.
No, but in, in reference to some of these photographs of Nisi's backyard, um, there's obviously an issue.
Well, and like I said, it's up to her, but, and you guys can ask her personally, but I'm sure she would agree that she would clean it up before she got her permit for her chickens.
Do you believe it would be um possible for her to move those chickens in the meantime?
I don't wanna speak for her, but I'm sure, I mean, I know she wants to keep them around, like, in her life, but I'm sure she could find a place because um she knew that the, she found out that the roosters were not allowed, and she did have those moved, so I think that she has the possibility of...
And she didn't get these as chicks, she got them as full grown.
Right.
Right?
No, I think they were chicks.
Were they?
Right, because we talked about like, you know, how do you know if they're roosters or hens when they're so, when they're little? So I believe that she got them as chicks.
I mean, they're, they look full grown now.
Well, they grow, you know, chickens are not...
I don't know.
Long term, yeah. They grow quickly. They're not as quick as rats in sexual maturity, but they're, they're getting there.
I would make the uh, the idea of tabling it subject to us having her move them. I, you know, I, I would agree with the tabling if, in fact, um, you know, and maybe in during the break, you could check with her, make a phone call, and ask her if she could move them. And uh, um, because it, it is a concern.
I get it, I understand.
But, you know, then tabling it and talking about it next month would be, there you go.
Okay, I'll ask her, I can ask her.
You know, the other thing I'd, I'd point out is that um indicating that she's more than willing to clean up the yard is one thing, cleaning it up.
I understand. Believe me, I've been right in this, I've been in your seat, so I know exactly what that's about.
You know, and she also has a broken hand or broken arm at this point, so I understand that she's, you know, in a tough spot right at the moment. I, I can assure you, we don't hold anybody else's actions against applicants.
That would be good.
Yes. So we, we consider each application on its own, on its merits in relation to whatever the provisions of the code are, so...
Okay, all right, I can check with her.
All right, that would be helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll close the hearing with respect to...
I was just gonna say, do you also wanna stop her from doing any more work on the coop where it is?
Well, I kinda told her that the other day, with the... Yes, and that, I think if we're going to table it, uh, Mr. LaPerry's suggestion that we put it, uh, table it with a condition that there's no further work on, that the chickens are removed and also that there's no further work on the coop would be appropriate. All right, moving along to our next case.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB one nine zero six dash three. Upon the matter of request by Christopher Hinton and Carolyn Legault for an area variance to install six-foot-high side yard fencing exceeding maximum permitted height on premises seven ninety Winona Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
My name is Chris Hinton.
My name is Carolyn Legault.
And you both live at um...
Seven ninety Winona Boulevard.
Thank you. And if you'd raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth?
I do.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
All right.
So we're looking for a variance for a small portion of our fence. Some of it's actually already pre-existing. It's actually on the survey from when we, uh, bought the house. So when we bought it, that part that was pre-existing, we've been slowly looking to like buy more furniture and then do more with our backyard and then certain rooms in our house. We were looking now towards building a fence, and we had just assumed that we could go across from the pre-existing six-foot fence and just connect it to our house cuz we didn't see any reason why we couldn't. But when we came to apply for a permit, we were told that the majority of our fence was perfectly fine to be six-foot, but for that portion, some of the pre-existing fence, I believe it's about twenty feet, we would need a variance for, and then an additional twenty feet to bring it across to our house. We spoke to the neighbor that is southwest to the, the one that, the pre-existing fence is running along there, and they said they have no problem with it, and we actually have a letter from them confirming the same.
If you could hand that to Mr. Scott, that would be helpful.
We do have a few dogs, so we're looking to get the fence for them. And then also for privacy, we have a patio back there. We're looking to either build some furniture ourselves or go out and buy some patio furniture, a grill, and getting that fence to be the six-foot, that fur- that a little bit further, the twenty feet forward would give us privacy for our patio, as opposed to getting it across the six-foot from where it is. And then also if we did, if we did the uh, if we did it across from where the, we were permitted to do the six-foot, it would look a little weird because our neighbors do have a little chain link running across there, and then it wouldn't really be uniform with the rest, so...
Our fence, yeah, our fences right now, as they are actually lined up, there is just four foot and chain link on their side, and ours is six foot on our side.
So if we were to take down, like, say, the variance were not to be approved, and we had to take down the pre-existing fence, it would look a little weird where it wouldn't line up as nicely anymore. Thank you for, all for your time, too.
Well, do I, am I seeing this correctly about that you're gonna put a fence down the driveway?
So, so there's, it's like rocks where it, it's not marked correctly. The driveway would come up here, the fence would come up right alongside the driveway and then cut. There's like a rock patch, like a, I don't even know how to explain it.
So we have...
It's basically stone. It's not, it's not, that particular spot of the driveway's not created.
Yeah, it looked like someone had put a um rock turnaround spot, um, but it's not really driveway.
Exactly. I'm pretty sure the previous owners had three cars, and we don't have um a garage, so you can fit two cars in our actual driveway, and I'm pretty sure they cleared that out and put stones in it for their daughter's car to go in.
Cuz when I, I looked at it, I was looking at where the area was for the other, and then I...
Right.
And I went by, there were a lot of people parking around and walking around your neighborhood.
Yes, this past weekend?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Now, I made the mistake when I went over to the house, thinking that the highlighted portion in blue was part of the variance, but it is not. No. But I did question that particular corner, um, what, what they were doing, but obviously, um...
So is that, that's not an issue then, along, what is, what is the, the other street there?
That's Winchester.
On Winchester, as long as...
It's considered the side, not the front.
That's actually considered the rear yard, so in this particular corner lot...
That six-foot fence along where those bushes are, there's, I think there's some short bushes or shrubs. So like, that, that's not an issue as far as there is...
That's not an issue as long as they maintain a three-foot setback from the edge of their property. And so, uh, one thing we often caution people is edge of their property does not equate to edge of pavement or edge of sidewalk. So we have them rely on their survey instrument map to measure out from the building and then subtract three from that number, and that's where, where they're allowed to site a fence in that area.
So the survey is two years old. Do you have any idea how long the fence that you wanna finish essentially has been there?
Not sure. When we, when we purchased the property, we actually have a boundary line agreement, so I had assumed that everything was approved. We actually just found out when we came here that that section wasn't.
So the, the boundary line agreement relates in part to the wooden fence as well as the chain link?
I believe it's the wooden fence.
Yep, and when we had somebody, because even before we came to get the, the permits, we wanted to see how much this would cost. So when we had somebody come to at least quote us on it, he said that that fence actually looked relatively new, and he thought it was built within the last ten years, but he didn't really have any additional info.
All right, but it's been there a while. I mean, obviously, all right, and essentially what you wanna do is just finish what the predecessors started.
Correct.
They're also gonna be squaring off that uh southwest corner, um... Whoever put it up before didn't bring it all the way uh parallel with the uh, that side of the house. So they're gonna be going out a little bit, which would square it off nicely.
Yeah, cuz if we had to come across from where it is, there's a window well right in our basement, so we couldn't connect it properly to the house.
Is there anyone here, or I'm sorry, are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I got one. Is uh, do you have a special use permit for three dogs? You have to get that from Animal Control, not from us.
That I do not know. I'm sorry, but I'm happy to get one tomorrow morning.
Just wanna let you know.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I appreciate that.
I thought it was the police department that issued that.
Animal Control.
Animal Control.
Animal Control?
Animal Control has the um, the authority to issue the special use permit for any more. If you have exceed two dogs, then a special use permit or a special permit from the Animal Control Officer is required. I can, I'm happy to provide them the contact information to do so.
Thanks, we, we thought it was four, so, so definitely not getting four. But we'll get a permit for that, appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll uh open it up to public input. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences, corner lots, any of those things that relate to this application doesn't have an opinion about this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call our next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one nine zero six dash four. Upon the matter of request by Michael and Sarah Puncan for area variances to install six-foot-high front and side yard fencing on a corner lot exceeding maximum permitted height, linear footage and non-conforming type on prem- on premises 333 Longacre Road in an R1 residential district.
My name is Sarah Penkin and I live at 333 Longacre Road.
Michael Penkin, I live at 333 Longacre Road.
You swear affirm that uh, everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
So we are here today to ask for four separate variances. Um, we also have a corner lot, so when you asked about who would like to talk about corner lots, we'll definitely chat about that. So, we have a 1955 ranch that is set far back on a third of an acre at the corner of Sunflower and Longacre Road. Um, what is currently behind the house is a very tiny three foot, it's three feet?
About three feet.
Three feet tall picket fence. Um, we are looking to take what is existing there and make it a six foot fence, which we already have a building permit for. We are also looking to extend that fence down the entire length of the house, down to six feet from the road, and then enclosing our front yard. Um, if you look at what our, our survey actually looks like, um, because of the side lot, or sorry, because of the corner lot that we do have and the around equate town rules, our front yard is actually what I would consider my side yard, and my side yard is actually what I would consider my front yard. Um, our front yard is very large. We have a driveway that fits eight cars and our two-car attached garage faces Longacre, which is what our address is, however, that is technically considered our side yard. So we are not looking to put a six foot tall privacy fence that is over thirty-two feet long in our actual front yard. If you're looking at the picture, it makes a lot more sense than what I'm saying. Um, I have pictures of what our front yard and side yard and everything looks like, if you would like to pass around my laptop. And it'll make a little bit more sense.
And if you're uh, you also have a large dog?
He's about fifty-five pounds. His name is Charlie.
That I saw doesn't really like to, although he'll bite the lacrosse ball, he doesn't wanna bring it back.
No, he's very terrible at fetch. Very, very bad.
He's good at fetch, he's just, he's bad with dropping it.
Dropping.
He's not very good at that.
And uh, so if, is another purpose of this fence to give him room to run around?
Yes.
Because I noticed he was on a leash in the front yard when he was trying to play.
Yes.
Yep.
We also are planning on having kids in the next two years. This is our first house that we've bought, so we've been there just over a year. And eventually we would like to have children and have a space that is enclosed because we do live on the corner of two streets.
And have you talked to the neighbor on Sunflower about this?
Yes, we have. We do not have anything signed by him. Um, but they actually do not have a fenced-in yard, so it would end up giving their backyard a little bit of extra privacy as well.
Do they have any concern about visibility, like backing out of their driveway with a six foot fence running all the way to the end of their driveway?
Not that they mentioned, however, it would be about six feet from the end of their driveway.
Okay.
Just because it's three feet from wherever our property line is, we have to go three feet in from that.
And, and actually, there's, there's no sidewalk on um, Sunflower, however, there's a very wide right-of-way. So I'm looking at aerial photography, which doesn't depict exact dimensions of parcel lines, but gives you a general sense. The parcel line doesn't come to the edge of pavement there or even close. So when they're measuring from their home and subtract that three feet on the Sunflower side, there's gonna be quite a bit of distance.
It's hard, it's hard to tell when you're walking around and you don't know where the right-of-way ends.
Sure, and that, that's can be challenging even for property owners. That's why we always advise then everybody to use their survey map and measure from buildings, 'cause the buildings are easy to find. So, um, we will have them make sure that the fence is sighted in such a way. There should be uh, as a result of where the right-of-way i- is and where the edge of their property and that setback, there should be minimal sight distance issues.
And that, that small, it's like a vinyl picket fence back there?
Yes.
Going out.
It'll go. Our dog can jump over it.
I assumed.
That happened twice.
Through, it didn't seem like it was.
No.
Keeping.
It has to go.
I heard him, I didn't see him. It rang the bell.
Oh yeah, that'll do it.
He knew I was there.
On this, uh, on the survey that you submitted with your application, you have something labeled the, oh, twenty-seven feet, that's how far you plan to go from the house?
Uh, yeah, 'cause that gives us about, uh, our property line ends three feet from the road, and that puts us in another three feet.
But if we have to go backwards and we have to go from the house down, that'll probably be different, based on how we end up measuring it out. 'Cause you're saying we have to go from the house.
Actually, you measured properly. You measured out that you were going to go twenty-seven feet from the edge of the building, and that is three feet less than the thirty feet from the building that you have on, as your property line. So you, you drew it exactly the way you would construct it.
Perfect.
And when I, when I came for the, to actually uh, pick up the application, and I'm sorry, I don't, I'll catch your name. Michelle, she, she walked me through it. We basically sat down and drew, drew the whole thing out a- as close to uh, would, which would be uh, appropriate for a fence in our front yard.
Um, obviously, this board is to grant variances, but the variances have to be as minimal as we possibly can do to make things satisfactory. So I'm always the guy to throw in the curveball. Can it be a little closer to the house? Does it have to come out the twenty-seven feet? I noticed there's two big huge trees. My thought was bring it on the other side of the two trees, uh, which will bring you probably about twenty-two feet out or something, um, or is there a compromise? Uh, only because being on a residential street, I know having a corner lot is um, kind of a bad situation uh, for you, 'cause you wanna use it all. And when they put a fence like that all the way out to the road, it makes the rest of the street look funny. So, is there a compromise that you could come back a little bit?
If, if we came back, uh, personal preference, I would like to keep it on the outside of the trees, just because if we do go on the inside of the trees, it, it actually will only be about maybe fifteen to eighteen feet.
They're very large.
And that would.
They're nice trees though.
Yes. So that, that, I mean, we could bring it, we could bring it as tight to the trees in the front, if, if that would be. I, I'm not set on the twenty-seven feet, but if we could uh, keep it on the outside of the trees, that would be my personal preference.
I, I assume that the fence gets sold in six foot panels?
Yes.
Uh, eight, eight foot.
Oh yeah, eight. It's eight foot.
Six feet tall by eight feet long.
Alright, so if we went out twenty-four feet, that'd be three panels and you wouldn't have to cut it.
Yeah.
So would that work, twenty-four?
If that would, I, I'm
That'd bring you down.
Certain that would be right in front of, that would put us in front of the trees, so I don't, I don't think that would be an issue.
That would bring it down to about a thousand feet that you're gonna have at the side front, depending upon how you look at it.
Uh, square feet?
Being close, square feet, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And your front, the actual front lawn that you.
Physical front, yeah.
Longacre, i- is gonna be, end up being about double that, so that won't be fenced in, so.
Correct.
Basically, what you're looking for is to take about a third of what your available yard is.
Our technical front yard.
We use these a lot.
Okay. And that's really about the only place that you have to kinda spread out, given the
Right.
location of the garage and patio and the distance between the line and the house.
Right. We only have a sliver of a technical backyard, so.
Alright. Other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
Good evening, I'm Matthew Fredericks. I live at 311 Longacre, so I'm the corner lot right next to these guys. I also have a dog that likes to fetch, but not drop the ball. Um, I just came to attest to these guys, one, they've been great neighbors, but the houses that do go right behind us on Seneca and Sunflower are super close. I did have an existing fence lately already, so it does separate us. Um, I've had to replace a couple panels that were damaged. The fence is so old already. Um, but their dog is definitely tall enough where he can jump that little fence in the back, and with having kids in the future, those houses are right behind us. Um, so it just adds a little bit of privacy, whether you're entertaining, if you do have kids, you have the dog out there, you don't want you have to be out there in the front yard, making sure he's not running off a leash. Um, you can only take him for so many walks in a day type thing, but you know, they're active dogs, so. I was just here to kinda stay up for these guys and hopefully um, tell you that, you know, having a fence definitely makes it a lot better. And my neighbors behind me and the other people on Sunflower, also I've met them all. Um, and none of them have had any problems with me having my fence or anywhere else, so. Hopefully that'll kind of uh, lean a, a little bit of leniency to these guys and, and get in there a little bit, so they can have a nice private, private area on their side and back, so. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences, corner lots, anything like that that doesn't have an opinion about this application?
I kinda have a question about a corner lot.
Okay.
So, obviously, my front yard, what Arundicote considers my front yard, isn't my front yard. Um, obviously. Is there a way that that rule can be rewritten so that it's wherever your front door is?
Sure, the town board can change that at any time. But it's a much harder process than it sounds.
I was gonna say, that sounds like it could be really easy or really hard.
So, um, in order to make changes to the zoning code, it's actually a matter of a local law and a zoning update that needs to take place. Um, it's certainly something that the town board does undertake from time to time. And I can tell you as the Director of Community Development and the former Planning and Zoning Administrator that this is one of the things on my list of corrections when the time does come. And the, um, so we, this is something that we've identified as a potential opportunity for enhancement. Uh, the code is written the way it's been written and has been in place for some time with respect to the definitions of lots and corner lots and front yards. And um, it's something that we'll be taking a look at um, in the coming, in the coming time, for sure.
Wonderful. I think for new homeowners, especially in the town of Arundicote, who are looking for, excuse me, um, a little bit more privacy, and everybody in Arundicote seems to have a dog, um, it'll just make it a little bit easier for people to update their houses and spruce things up outside. And it definitely would've made our lives a little bit easier too.
You're also unusual in terms of the uh.
Where the house is set on the property too.
Corner lots that we get. A lot of them would be, have an address on Sunflower Drive.
Right.
So. Yeah.
Been kind of an ongoing thing with fences, and we've been trying to get the town board to look at changing the fence laws. They actually started uh, about, about four or five years ago, they actually started to take a poll or whatever of what we should do, and it never got going, but.
The, the undertaking, the, um, it's a lo- it can be a large, a large undertaking, and so it's something that we're certainly mindful of and trying to figure out the best way to proceed, so that we're not doing piecemeal updates, but certainly on the radar for sure.
Wonderful.
As they say, it's a process, not an event.
Right.
Alright, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter then and move on to the next uh, case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1906 dash five. Upon the matter of request by John and Louise Wallace for an area variance to construct a new front porch with less than required front setback on premises 135 Clark Avenue in an R2 residential district.
Evening. My name is John Wallace. I own and have resided at 135 Clark Avenue for the last forty years.
Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we're asking for a variance to put a front porch on the front of our house. Right now, we have like a five by six foot um, cement uh, landing coming out the front door with a couple steps down. Uh, currently it extends five foot six inches out from the house. Um, what I would like to do is run that from where it is all the way over to the driveway, uh, which is gonna make it about nineteen foot six inches long. Purpose of it is, um, we have a relative that's living with us now. Uh, he's eighty-nine years old, a veteran. Um, he has no way of getting outside. He's restricted to a motorized wheelchair, scooter, whatever you wanna call it. So we wanna, we have, VA has come and put in, put on a ramp so that he can now at least exit from the front of the house. I did a temporary platform on top of the existing platform, so it would be level with the doorway coming out. Um, what we'd like to do is put a porch out there so that he can go out and sit outside um, on the porch uh, there uh, as far as when the time comes.
You've been referencing a porch, your application is to construct a front deck.
Okay, it would be.
It would be an open.
An open, yeah, it would be deck, deck materials for flooring on it. Um, railings the same whether it be a porch or a deck. Um, railings would be, they're gonna be white, uh, which would match the trim on the house. Um, along the bottom of, of it, it's gonna be totally enclosed, uh, so that rodents, whatnot, animals can't get underneath it. That bottom portion would be painted gray to match the uh, two courses of block that's on the house now, which is painted gray. Uh, railings would match trim on the house. So when the time comes and the ramp is no longer needed and that's taken down, uh, it doesn't become an eyesore, it doesn't look like, uh, okay, something's missing there now. The only thing that would need to be done is to extend the um, railing, that uh, five foot, I think it is, the opening right now, um, there'll be a five foot opening at the edge to enter onto the platform that's existing there now for the ramp. So that, all we'd have to do is uh, enclose that last five foot uh, railing, once the, the ramp itself comes down.
What were you gonna do for steps?
There's gonna be uh, be two steps on the very, on the front side, right next to the driveway. So, yep, so you'd go right down and uh, from the deck right onto the driveway.
Excuse me, any other questions or comments from the board?
Just, just one, just to confirm the VA is building this for you?
No, I, I'll be actually doing the construction of the uh, porch or deck itself. The VA came out and put in the ramp for him.
Okay.
That, we got the, they got the permit for, an approval for, to put the ramp in.
Okay, so you're just putting the deck to link into.
Right. I'm gonna take out those smudge stairs altogether and it'll be uh, replaced with a deck that'll go straight out to the driveway.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open this to public input. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone that would like to talk to us about ramps, decks, anything like that?
Well, the other thing I could add is that we did uh, speak to the neighbors, both sides of us and across the street. Um, I did not get written statements from them, but they had no objections to it at all.
Okay, and as with all the other applicants here tonight, I noticed that you had the sign prominently displayed in front of the house, so.
Yes.
Everyone, anyone who had a question could ask.
Right.
Alright. Uh, seeing um, no one who wishes to avail themselves of the opportunity for public input, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. And.
No, I said thank you.
Oh, and move on to the next case. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1906 dash six. Upon the matter of request by Robin Harris for an area variance to construct a six foot high side yard fence exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 360 Ransford Avenue in an R2 residential district.
Good evening, uh, Robin Harris. I reside at 360 Ransford in Arundicote.
Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I would like to put up, I believe you guys have all little maps and everything. Wanted to run a side fence. Actually, I wanna fence the whole yard, but I'm most concerned with the side, which is to a corner house, uh, 370, or no, actually, I think it's 350 Ransford. And they have dogs. I do not have dogs, as many people, I guess, in Arundicote have dogs. Um, there are two rottweiler dogs at that residence. There is only a chain link fence, which is owned by 350 Ransford. They also have an in-ground pool there. I have a four-year-old that I am raising. He resides there with me. I'm very concerned whenever he is in the backyard. I have a place set for him up. I'm very concerned whenever he is in the backyard. I have a playset for him up there. I have put it off to the other side of my yard because of 350 Ransford having the pool and the dogs. I purposely moved it to the other side, but as soon as he's out there playing, the dogs can see him. They get worked up, they sand up onto the fence. Um, so i- it's a huge concern. I guess if they had him on a chain, or at least had muzzles on them, I would not be as concerned, but I don't wanna wait until something happens. Jonathan is four. I cannot keep him away from a fence and it's not really my job to put their dogs in the house or chain or muzzle them when they see that he's in the yard.
So, you're gonna take down the chain link fence that surrounds your property?
It is not my fence. The chain link is not my fence. It is his fence and he has a stockade fence also that covers partially where the pool is.
Right, well, the reason that I ask is because according to the map that you submitted, there's a chain link fence with a gate that starts at the...
My chain link fence is no longer there. That was taken down last year.
So, the fence that shows on the survey is no longer there?
My fence is no, I only had one part that went to the side of the house and it connected to his. I've only been there four years, so it must, it was all pre-existing.
Yeah, the northeast corner of the...
This portion here?
No, I was talking about here.
No, that's the other side of the house.
Right, the other side of the house. So, you're taking that chain link fence down?
There's, there's no fence there.
There's no fence.
So, it's already down. So, you're gonna put a six-foot fence. You wanna go all the way to the front corner of your house?
Correct.
And then are, are you planning on connecting it to the corner of the house or leaving it open?
I would like, I did not do that. I would like to connect it all the way to the front, yes. I would like to wrap it all the way so that the whole yard is secured. I also have bathroom windows that are on that side of the house, which they face their kitchen window. Um, so it would kinda give a little more privacy there.
Okay. So, and the variance that you're seeking is approximately, it looks like it might be about sixteen feet?
Uh, from the, in the front of my house, from the front of the house, the property is sixteen feet to his fence. And so, I was looking at roughly fourteen, as I had discussed with, um, I'd like to leave a mow path. Even though that is his property, I would like to be able to keep the other side of the fence clean and I do not wanna connect or, you know, get that close to his chain link fence because it will be vinyl. I don't want the kids or the dogs to jump and scratch on the side of the fence that I can't see. So, I would definitely leave a buffer, even if I lose a foot of my yard, um, so that I can get down the side of it to mow in between his chain link and where I'd like to put the vinyl.
When I was out there the other day, we spoke about bringing the, um, bringing it back, um, just...
To the chimney.
To the chimney, to the backside of the chimney, um, which will, uh, still cover over her bathroom windows and give her the privacy from, um, the dog, uh, area and the pool area. And she seemed to be okay with that.
I'm fine with that, yes.
So, um, so if it went out from the, uh, which would be the, uh...
South side.
South side? I'm looking at, okay, yeah, the south side, as it, um, well, actually, it would be the, uh, it'd be the south, um...
Southwest.
West side. So, the s, the west side of the chimney, um, or the, or toward the back of the house, coming from, from right alongside that chimney.
The front chimney, front chimney.
Yeah, the front chimney. It would almost be where their chain link ends, where they have the dog kennel. They have a dog kennel that's right there by my bathroom window and their fence comes out a little bit. I would say we're talking maybe four or five feet from the corner of my house. So, yes, I would, I'm okay with coming to the inside of the chimney, which, like we said, would cover the bathroom window also. It would go all the way to the end of where his chain link is. It would pretty much corner up to the corner of his chain link.
Pretty, pretty close.
Outside of, I wanna leave my buffer.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, would they be, um, I don't have a problem with having her fence after being out there and seeing the location to the corner of the house straight across. I, I, I think it would, it would actually look better, um, just being her, her house and the fence to the corner, I think.
Yeah, and it wouldn't obstruct their kitchen window, nor would it obstruct the road coming around the corner because they are on a corner lot. And that also brings up what you were saying about changing laws, because their front door is actually to the front side, but they actually use the side door where their garage is more, which is still Ransford because Ransford goes around that bend. But it, the fence would not, um, obstruct any road line or sightline coming around, 'cause that's a very short corner coming around there. I'm just, I'm very concerned about the dogs and the pool, because his fence is very, very old. Even the stockade fence is leaning against the chain link fence.
And you have three fences that are not really connected to each other. It's just kinda dangling in the wind, so it's...
Yeah, his chain, his stockade is ready to tip. In fact, I thought the chain link was mine and I had said to him last year, "If I take this chain link down, your stockade is gonna fall." But then, once I looked at the map a little bit better, I'm like, "Oh, it's not even mine." So, I'm like, "Great," 'cause there's trees growing in between it. It's, it's pretty old.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it to public input. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences, dogs, things like that, that doesn't have an opinion about this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter.
I hear somebody wants to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Step right up. I didn't see your hand come up. You wanna reach for the sky.
Hi, my name is Barb Cirillo. I reside 24-4, some kinda kitty corner, uh, to the homeowner's house. I was just curious, is, are we gonna enclose the entire yard, not just, 'cause you mentioned you're gonna enclose the entire yard with six-foot fence?
I would like to do the whole, the whole yard, the back and both sides. The one side to 370 Ransford, I would not do until next year.
But that, if I am reading this right on the map, that would be closed in at the back of what looks like it would be an enclosed garage, right?
That would be where the pre-existing was, back to the back porch, the back sunroom porch. Yes, I would not bring that side all the way up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I did speak to, um, I'm talking to a neighbor with the tattoos next to, next door.
Uh, 370 Alex, yes.
370 Alex, and, uh, he indicated he, he wouldn't mind having, uh, for what she wants to do next year. He, he approved that. He thought it was a good idea. And, uh, also that he thought it was a good idea to bring the fence all the way forward of the chimney, so he could get some support there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't get his name.
The only reason I bring him back is for aesthetics.
And so, it's all gonna be enclosed, but it will still allow the natural, uh, catchwater basin behind the house.
Excuse me, ma'am. Two things. One is if you're gonna provide input, you need to be at the microphone. And also, you need to direct your questions or your comments to the board. Thank you so much.
I just want, I didn't know what was the plan for the future in regards to that, 'cause we have a lot.
All right, the, uh, enclosing her backyard and bringing it up to the northwest corner of what's probably, I, I'm guessing, a garage, uh, doesn't require any variances at all. That's all permissible under the town. What requires the variance is to come forward on the south side of the house, on the line, forward to the front of the house and go across to the front corner on the southwest side of the, of the house.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak with respect to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and we will be in recess in, for about ten minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ma'am.
All right, ma'am. Okay, she will.
As I mentioned at the top of the meeting, we call the cases in the order for which the app, we deliberate, uh, in the order for which they appear on the agenda and for which the applicants are still present. So in order to facilitate that process, I'll sort of take attendance as the applicant for 67 Birchwood, still present, yes. Okay. Uh, 762 Titus Avenue, yes. 790 Winona Boulevard, yes. 333 Longacre Road, yes. 135 Clark Avenue, yes. All right, we're going to go through them in the order that they appear on the agenda, because everybody's still here. Thanks for staying with us. All right, uh, let me get my sheets here. First, uh, case for our consideration is the application pertaining to 67 Birchwood Drive. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll jump in. Uh, I'll make a motion for 67 Birchwood Drive to approve the, um, the shed. This is the shed, right? Yep. To approve the front yard shed. Um, I believe we've, um, come to a, uh, a location that is in the front yard off of the driveway approximately halfway between the road and the, um, front of the house. The exact measurements, I'm not sure of, uh, so I'm not going to be specific. But, uh, in reference to it, um, hurting the character of the neighborhood, I don't believe it, uh, uh, will change the character of the neighborhood because of the, um, situation of the neighborhood, that some houses are forward to the road and some houses are ba- set back. So there really is no other alternative, um, which is number two alternative, uh, for this variance, because they have no backyard. Everything's out front of the home. Um, he also does not have a garage, uh, so he does need to store, um, whatever he'd like to store in the shed. Um, it, it is, uh, to me, not a substantial request, um, uh, based on the situation. Uh, I don't believe it'll affect the physical and environmental conditions. I don't think it's going to hurt anything, um, of the sort. Um, and this situation is self-created, um, but then again, it maybe isn't self-created because it's kind of the layout of the property, and there's really not a lot anybody could do, um, so I'm going to say it's not self-created, uh, changed my thought there. Um, based on all that criteria, I believe we should approve, um, this motion, or this application.
I'll second. With respect to the, uh, dimensions of the variance that we're granting, my recollection is, and this is directed to Mr. Lanza, uh, my recollection was that, uh, it was your father said he was going to have the, what would be the south of the shed would be 29 feet from the front of the house, and then a 10 feet shed, so it would extend to 39 feet, right?
That is correct.
All right, so the variance that we would be approving then would be for a shed to be located between 29 and 39 feet from the, measured from the front, uh, of the house toward the road.
But, but in a, any case behind the trees?
Well, that would put it behind the trees, yes.
I'm not sure.
Well, that, that's what they said, the measurement, but it would be behind the trees. So the variance that we're approving is for 29 to 39 feet with the shed to be located south of the trees. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Have you got that? Is that all? All right.
She's typing like crazy.
Yep, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. And we are all present and fully constituted. The next application will be the application pertaining to 762, uh, Titus Avenue. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Uh, I would make a motion to table, uh, the, um, application for a, uh, to the July meeting on the condition that the chickens are to be removed from the property pending, uh, determination of the application.
We were going to check with the applicants.
I have it right here on my phone where she says she agrees with that, and she will remove the chickens, clean up the yard.
Thank you.
Make sure everything's tight for what you wanted it.
Thank you.
Hopefully, she'll be back here.
Very good.
I do want to tell you one news blast from the West, or goats loose in Ragga.
Goats loose in Ragga?
My husband texted me that goats were loose.
Goats are loose, okay.
I felt it was fit right away.
Are they headed east or west?
They're probably not going toward the landfills.
They need a special use permit in the town of Orinacoid if they come here.
Right.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, any discussion, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We are fully constituted. But still missing, Mr. Thomas. The next application pertains to the property at 790 Winona Boulevard. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application with?
I have a conflict of interest on this one that I just discovered, so I'll step down.
Oh, yes, okay. Does anyone wish to make a motion, uh, with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion again, 790 Winona Boulevard. I believe we should, uh, approve this application. Uh, I don't believe it's a, a, a change to the character of the neighborhood. Uh, alternatives are not putting up a fence, but, uh, requiring the privacy that they would like. I don't think it is a substantial request. It's a very small area, and it is, uh, really not, um, bothering anybody behind them or next to them. Um, it won't affect the, uh, physical or environmental conditions of the, uh, neighborhood. Uh, it is a self-created issue in the fact that they have a little patio back there, and they'd like to, um, enclose it for privacy along with, uh, keeping their dogs in. Uh, again, based on the criteria, I believe we should approve this application as asked for.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We remain fully constituted.
With a reminder, you see the animal control officer? I, I said with a reminder that you see the animal control officer tomorrow. Thank you.
Next, uh, application for our consideration, it pertains to 333, uh, Longacre Road. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application with respect to this property?
Um, I'll move that we, uh, approve the variance as applied. Um, uh, it is a substantial request, um, given the amount of fence that they're going to have to put in. Um, however, I don't think this, the situation's self-created, uh, the, given the virtue of having a corner lot and how odd that is with the front of their house being the side yard and the side yard being the back, um, uh, it sounds like there's similar situations elsewhere in the neighborhood, so I don't think it's going to affect the character of the neighborhood in a negative way. Um, it won't have any, uh, adverse impact on the physical or environmental part of the neighborhood. Did I hit all five of those? Am I missing one?
I think so.
I think I got it.
Um, can I mention, uh, um, and it's up, it's your motion, Tim, Mr. Scott, in reference to bringing it back, uh, we had, uh, thought if it came back about three feet.
It was gonna, they were going, they agreed to do, uh, 32 feet, which is, or about 24 feet.
24 feet, which is.
Which is three eight-foot panel.
Oh, I, and, and instead of the 27.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to reflect the 24, which is 27.
And, and, and it could be 23, it could be 25, i- i- it's, it's going to be on, just on the outside of the two big trees.
Perfect.
Was that a second?
No, yeah, I'll second.
Sounded like it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We remain fully constituted. Next application is with respect to 135 Clark Avenue. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone, uh, wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we approve it. Um, it's, it's possible change to the character of the neighborhood. I don't think it will. Um, it's, is it, it's not a substantial request? Are there any alternatives? And that would be, you know, just to have a step in the front, no place for a veteran to go and sit during the day. I think that's an honorable thing. Also, um, I don't think it's going to affect, uh, environment conditions or anything in the neighborhood. It's self-created, yes, but they are taking care of a veteran who'd like, you know, to get some fresh air. And I think if they do it to match the house like they're talking about, it really wouldn't look that much like a deck, so to speak, as a, as a front porch.
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention. Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention, and we remain fully constituted. Last application for our consideration tonight pertains to 360 Ransford Avenue. This is also a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an applica-, uh, motion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application as written. Um, it is a substantial, um, uh, request, however, uh, given the conditions, um, of our yard and our neighbors, I think it fits, um, that, that we approve it. And, um, I don't think there's any other, anything else applies.
All right, I'll second the motion. I would also note that the alternative that wouldn't require a variance would be to put the fence farther back, which would, uh, not really be consistent with the use of the property, and, uh, it's not going to have any adverse physical or environmental effect.
Can I just ask, uh, a poll for the members of the board? Is there anybody that thinks like I do that it should be back a little bit behind the chimney? I know Mr. Evans doesn't, but is there anybody else that would request it back a little bit?
I, I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Evans. I would agree with you.
I'm fine either way.
Doesn't matter to me either.
I'm fine either way.
Okay, so it's just you and I, and we're all right. Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and the board remains fully constituted. Last item for the consideration of the board, uh, with our packets for this evening's meeting. Uh, everyone should have received the draft of the, from the minutes of our May 6th, uh, meeting. Did everyone have a chance to look those over? And does anyone have any, um, additions, corrections, or other changes that they might like to have made to the minutes of the meeting? Seeing none, I'd move that we approve the minutes of the May 6th meeting. Is there a second?
Thank you. Jonathan thanks you all, so.
All right, there's a second from Mr. Robson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Travis abstains.
You got it.
Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are fully constituted. There's one abstention, I'm sorry. We are all fully constituted, and that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Orinacoid Zoning Board on ICAT Government Access.